All, please.
And the broadcast has started. I apologize. I'm having a little trouble hearing you, Tara.
Sorry. Let me just one minute. Let me take you off my headphones.
There we go. Actually, I can hear you perfectly now.
It's better?
Much, much better. Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. I'll start over.
No worries.
Like to call the meeting to order? Can we start with the roll call, please?
Yes. Members Raythal?
Here.
Tati Chi?
Here.
And Member Martenson?
Here.
And we do have a quorum.
Great. Can we read the opening statement, please?
Absolutely. This meeting is live streamed and temporarily closed to in-person public participation. The Clerk's office is in process of hosting hybrid public meetings that will provide Board members and members of the public with the option to participate in the meeting either in person or remotely. Thank you for your patience and support.
Great. Now we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance?
I apologize. There's just a bit more. To make a verbal comment at today's meeting, dial 916-875-2500, and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off agenda matter. When the Chair opens public comment for a specific agenda item or off agenda matter, callers will be transferred from the queue into the meeting to make a verbal comment. Written comments are always accepted. Feel free to send your email comments to boardclerk@saccounty.net, and your comment will be routed to the Board and filed in the record.
Good? Great.
Yes. Thank you.
We'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Can we call the first item, please?
Yes. Item number one is for a tentative parcel map, a special development permit and design review, located at 14156 State Highway 160, approximately a quarter mile west of the California 160 and First Avenue intersection in the Delta Community, and the environmental document is a notice of exemption.
Great. Do we have a staff presentation?
We do have Jesse Shin on board.
Yep. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'll be presenting a brief presentation for this request. Next slide, please. "The project site is located at 14156 State Highway 160, approximately 0.4 miles west of the California 160 and First Avenue intersection in the Delta Community. The project site is approximately 39.27 acres in size, and with the existing AG40 zoning designation, which requires a minimum lot area of 40 acres, project site as it currently exists is substandard in size. There is an active Williamson Act contract in place on the entirety of the project site, and access to the site is provided via a 20-foot-wide unpaged private road under an ingress egress easement from California 160 to the east. This existing private road provides access to the southeastern corner of the subject parcel." Next slide, please. "The request is for a tentative parcel map to divide 39.27 acres into two parcels in the AG40 zoning district, a special development permit to allow reductions in the minimum lot areas for proposed parcels 1 and 2, and design review to comply with the countywide design guidelines." Next slide, please. "With this map request, proposed parcels 1 and 2 would be approximately 4.07 and 35.19 acres, respectively, and would maintain the existing AG40 zoning designation. The existing single-family residential structure garage and shed would be located on proposed parcel 1 as the homestead parcel. Proposed parcel 2 would contain the remaining portions of the parcel utilized for agricultural operations. No structures would be located on proposed parcel 2. In terms of access to the proposed parcels, the existing 20-foot-wide private road from California 160 would continue to provide access to proposed parcel 2. A proposed 20-foot-wide ingress egress easement would extend northwesterly from the existing terminus of the private road along the southern boundary of proposed parcel 2 to provide access to proposed parcel 1. In response to comments received at the Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council regarding the access and maintenance of the existing proposed private road easement that would serve an additional parcel, condition 3 requires the recording of a road access and maintenance agreement between all parcels served by the existing proposed easement prior to map recordation. At a minimum, the agreement shall identify users of the access road and provisions for necessary repair and maintenance of the access roadway. It is noted that a public comment was received on this item, which speaks to concerns regarding the aforementioned access concerns as well as activities or uses that would take place on proposed parcel 1. The owner and applicant are on the line and can speak to the intent of the use of proposed parcel 1 if requested. However, as the existing zoning designation would remain unchanged for proposed parcel 1, activities that are permitted by right in the AG40 zoning district would be permitted to occur on the resulting parcel. To that end, general agricultural uses is permitted by right in the AG40 zone. Multifamily development is not permitted, and commercial cannabis activities are prohibited in all zoning districts." Next slide, please. "The project is a land division request to separate the existing residence from future farming operations for the purpose of financing, estate planning, or future ownership transfer. The existing use would continue on the proposed parcel, and no development or change in use is requested with this land division request. Additionally, the request does not propose any modifications to the existing Williamson Act contract. The Planning Commission is the decision body for this map as the request is located in an area designated as agricultural prop lands and is inconsistent with general plan policy AG7, which states that the request should not be approved unless the decision body finds that the proposed subdivision will not deter the general plan objective to maintain and enhance agricultural production capabilities. A special development permit is requested to deviate from county standards related to the minimum lot area required for the AG40 zone. And condition 4, in attachment 2, requires the owner of the project site to convey development rights of the county on proposed parcel 2 to guarantee that the reduction in lot area will not result in an increase in density of residential uses. The environmental document is a notice of exemption." Next slide, please. "Track, the Agricultural Advisory Committee, as well as the Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Committee, all met to consider the project and indicated support for the project or approval of the project." Next slide, please. "As such, staff recommends approval of the project and that the Planning Commission take the following actions listed on this PowerPoint. Staff is available for any questions, and the applicant team represented by Gil LeBree and the owner Sam Town are available as well. Thank you."
Great. Thank you. Any questions for staff? Hearing none. We'll call the applicants up and swear them in as well.
And this is Lydia with the Clerk of the Board's Office, and I do see that we have applicant Mr. Gillum on board. I do not see Mr. Blake Varg. But I'm going to go ahead and get you sworn in, Mr. Gillum. And if you so wish to address the commission...
Hi, Lydia. This is for item 1. Sorry.
Sorry, Chris.
Oh, I apologize. This is the list that Planning sent me. I apologize. So, all right, let's get the applicant sworn in. If you wish to address the commission, please stand to be sworn, and we ask that you raise your right hand, and the appropriate response is "I do." Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this commission is the truth? So help you God. If you do not swear, do you so affirm?
So Lydia, this is Chris. This is Chris. Sorry, Lydia.
That's okay.
The applicant for this item is Gil LeBree.
I see Gil LeBree here. It's listed under item 2, unfortunately. I apologize, Mr. LeBree.
All right.
Let me... Okay. So I'll briefly go through it again. I apologize. If you wish to address the commission, please stand to be sworn and raise your right hand, and the appropriate response is "I do." Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this commission is the truth? So help you God. If you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
And before you make your statements, please state your name for the record and make the statement "I have been sworn."
My name's Gil LeBree. And I have been sworn.
Thank you, sir.
The floor is yours to make. Any comments you wish?
Well, I don't know. I think it's been adequately explained by staff. This is not the first time that I have been the applicant for a lot reduction permit down here in the Delta over the last 35, 40 years. So it is not uncommon for this kind of thing to happen for various reasons, estate planning being one of them. So, to me, this is a logical thing to do in this particular instance. And the issue with the access that came up, I mean, it's been there since even before the subdivision that now is on the kind of the south side of what we call Clem Track. So it's a long-time situation that's been there. Whether or not this becomes a parcel separated out isn't going to change that. And it's been occurring up to now. So to me, that's that is something for them to work out, but I don't see that it really is subject to this map.
I guess I should ask you then, do you agree with all the conditions associated in the staff report?
Absolutely. You know, this is obviously standard, and it's not... Like I say, this is not my first unveil with this. So yes, I do agree.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant Commissioners? Okay, thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, there is no further public comment on this item.
Okay, great. Happy to hear discussion or entertain a motion?
This is Commissioner Tishi.
Go ahead, Commissioner Tishi.
Okay, I'll move staff recommendation.
And this is Justin. I'll second.
Great, thank you. Can we please have the vote?
And Members Raythal?
Yes.
Tati Chi?
Yes.
And Chair Martenson?
Yes.
Thank you. And the motion has passed.
Great, thank you. Please call the next item?
Item number 2 is resubmission and design review, located at 7691 Bradshaw Road, approximately a quarter mile south of the Gerber Road and Bradshaw Road intersection in the Vineyard Community, and the environmental document is an addendum to prior mitigated negative declaration.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'll be doing this presentation as well. Next slide, please. "The project site is approximately 10.2 acres and is located at 7691 Broad Shaw Road, approximately 0.2 miles south of the Gerber Road and Bradshaw Road intersection in the Vineyard Community. The existing RD7 zoning with flood combining overlay on the project site was established via approvals by the Board of Supervisors for the prior former Wildhawk West project, which included requests for a general plan amendment, community plan amendment, and rezone, comprehensive plan amendment, and tentative subdivision map. The former entitlements have been effectuated, establishing the existing zoning designation on the subject parcel. However, the tentative subdivision map expired in early 2018 and is no longer valid." Next slide, please.
I apologize. We're having some technical difficulty here. If you'll just all please bear with us.
Thank you. "The project site is located adjacent to planned and approved residential subdivisions, including the Wildhawk Unit 10 and Wildhawk Northwest projects. Additionally, at the time of approval for the former Wildhawk West project, there was a proposal to develop the parcel northwest of the project site as a public library. Based on conversations with the Sacramento Public Library staff, the library master plan has identified the need for a library in the Vineyard Community, and the site is still being considered for development of a public library. However, there are no tangible development plans for a public library on the site at this time." Next slide, please. "The request is for a resubmission of an expired tentative subdivision map to divide approximately 10.2 acres into 64 family, single-family residential lots and one landscape lot in the RD7, the flood combining overlay zoning district, as well as a design review to comply with countywide design guidelines." Next slide, please. "The tentative subdivision map submitted with this current request is the same as the map previously approved by the Board as part of the former Wildhawk West project. Proposed residential lots would range between 4,400 to 6,560 square feet in size, and all applicable lot with debt public street furniture requirements would be met. Additionally, the depicted conceptual buildable areas for each proposed residential lot would meet applicable building separation and yard setback requirements. A proposed 25-foot-wide landscape lot would be located between Bradshaw Road and the rear yards of proposed lots 59 through 64. In regards to circulation, public roadway, also known as A-way, would provide primary access to the project site from Bradshaw Road. A-way would connect to the primary east-west roadway on the project site, known as B-way, terminating on the eastern end at the planned intersection with Wildhawk Unit 10 project to the east. Additionally, C-way would connect to a planned roadway in the adjacent Wildhawk Northwest project abutting the project site to the southeast. Additional roadway connections to adjacent future development would be established through the north-south portion of A-way and D-way. In regards to the potential development of a public library to the parcel northwest of the project site, proposed irrevocable offers of dedication at the A-way bend and the terminus of One Courtway would allow for future connections to that site. Because proposed lots 33 through 37 contain furniture that would be established by right-of-way in adjacent Wildhawk Unit 10 project, conditions 4 and 24 aren't included to preclude lot creation or development until sufficient right-of-way has been established to provide access to these lots." Next slide, please. "As part of the hearing process and approval for the former Wildhawk West project, the Board requested the inclusion of traffic calming features such as raised median speed home stop signs, intersection bull belts, on proposed redways in the project site. The traffic calming exhibit submitted with this current request is generally the same as the map previously approved by the Board as part of the former Wildhawk West project. Minor refinements to the current traffic calming exhibit, such as the location of CPB pumps, were requested by county departments to better align with proposed lot boundaries. Although the proposed roadway layout and incorporation of traffic calming features are not typical of standards and county plans, no substantial changes to the previously approved roadway circulation sections were requested with this map to honor the Board's intent." Next slide, please. "To reiterate, the subdivision map for the former Wildhawk West project expired and is no longer valid. The maps submitted, along with the traffic calming feature, are the same as the exhibits approved as part of the former project. The design review advisory committee, Vineyard CPAC, both recommended approval of the project. The environmental document prepared is an addendum to the prior mitigated negative declaration and a new mitigation monitoring and reporting program." Next slide, please. "As such, staff is recommending approval of the project and that the Planning Commission take the following actions listed on this PowerPoint. Staff is available for any questions, and the applicant team is represented by Jim Gillum. Thank you."
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Hearing none. We'll call the applicant up and swear them in as well.
Jim Gillum here.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gillum. If you wish to address the commission, please stand to be sworn, and please also raise your right hand, and the appropriate response is "I do." Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this commission is the truth? So help you God. If you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
Thank you. And before you make your statement, please state your name for the record and make the statement "I have been sworn."
I chair, Members of the Commission, Jim Gillum of Gillum Consulting, and I have been sworn.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I don't have much to add to staff's presentation. I do want to thank them for their diligent staff work, and also thank you to the Commissioners for the communication prior to the hearing. Happy to answer any questions, but as I said, I believe staff did an excellent job covering the project.
Great. And you agree with all the conditions?
I do.
Great. Any questions for the applicant Commissioners? Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any public comment on this item?
And we do not have any additional public comments on this item.
Okay, we will open it up for comments or a motion.
This is Justin. I'd be happy to move staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Right.
Please call the vote.
Okay. And Commissioners Raythal?
Yes.
Tati Chi?
Yes.
And Martenson?
Yes.
And the motion passes to move staff recommendation.
Thank you. Next item, please?
Thank you. Item number 3 is to introduce the master plan update and acknowledge the end of the public comment period for the Sacramento County Metropolitan, I'm sorry, Sacramento International Airport, located at the Sacramento International Airport in the Tomas Community, and the environmental document is the draft supplemental environmental impact report.
Good evening. This is Glenn Rickleton with the Sacramento County Department of Airports. Thank you, Commissioners, for making time this evening. As stated, the purpose tonight is really to seek the Commission's acknowledgement of the end of the public review, public comment period for the draft supplemental environmental impact report, and direct planning environmental review staff to prepare the final supplemental environmental impact report for the master plan update. Before jumping to that action, we'd like to give a little bit of background about the master plan itself and some information in the environmental impact report draft that's the subject of this action. So, next slide, please. First of all, a little bit of background on the master plan itself. Airport master plan is a comprehensive study of the future planning and demand capacity needs on airport, typically over a 20-year planning horizon, bite into short, medium, and long terms. It has a variety of components in terms of your inventory of existing conditions, importantly, an aviation forecast on which future conditions and capacity are built, reviewing facility requirements, looking at alternatives to provide those requirements, and ultimately recommend a development plan and incorporate that into a capital improvement program. At SMF, it's important to recognize that the previous master plan was last completed in 2004, and that resulted in what most of you will recognize as, or was called at the time, the big bill, but was really Terminal B and Concourse B, the newer components of the airport. In addition to those components, there were other elements of the master plan that were never brought forward in terms of actual projects. In many ways, this update is a continuation of that master plan and built on a lot of the same demand and capacity needs, although some of the configuration and locations of those elements may have been relocated or changed. We did initiate an update to the master plan in 2014. As we were moving through the process, demand started to rapidly increase beyond what was forecasted, so we recognized the need to do another forecast. As you may understand, even that forecast has its challenges. Next slide, please. Because of the recognized rapid growth in activity, the master plan, rather than using a set of standardized years, five, 10, 20 years, takes the forecast activity and breaks them into what we call planning activity levels. Typically, these are based on passenger activities, but they're also components that may be dictated by cargo numbers or cars, parking, that sort of thing. So there's various planning activity levels, but the most common one that we use and predicate most of our decision-making and our action planning is on our in-plane passengers. And we use this because rather than assign a given year to an activity level, we look at the activity level and then look at the forecast and our passenger trends and see when that will happen. So that builds in flexibility in the master plan in terms of exactly when we need to execute a series of projects associated with planning activity level 1, 2, 3, or 4. On the whole, we're looking at a 20-year plan, but it could potentially stretch out a little bit longer than that, or it could be compressed if demand starts to be realized much sooner than what we had anticipated. But these are representative of the passenger activity level and forecasts based on a baseline, a low-growth and a high-growth scenario. And we could jump between those depending on what we see over the planning horizon, which is, again, typically a 20-year planning horizon. Next slide, please. As I indicated, we've had some challenges in making forecasts match what's actually going on. Unprecedented to the industry was the recent effects of COVID-19 pandemic and the unprecedented impacts it had on the industry worldwide, not just here in Sacramento. However, while we saw a tremendous drop in activity in 2020, we're also seeing a pretty quick rebound due to our operating characteristics, primarily as an origin destination airport with a lot of domestic travel. So whereas a lot of other airports that have international traffic are seeing that recovery take a lot longer, many domestic airports, such as Sacramento International Airport with a lot of domestic traffic, are seeing that recovery happen faster. So we've been taking these more recent numbers in consideration of our original forecast and applying them to see where we fall on the paradigm of our planning activity levels, see if we're going to need to be, as I discussed, moving things forward or right on the graph to make sure we have the improvements in place on the airport in a timely fashion to meet the demand that's emerging. So we had a little bit of a drop, as you can see by that big V. We hope it doesn't turn into a W, given the current state of affairs. But right now, we're planning on the assumption that our recovery is established, and we're moving forward, and we'll just see how aggressive that recovery is maintained to know when we need to implement projects based on planning activity levels 1 through 4. Next slide. For this master plan process, we've gone, this was initiated back really in 2018, and we've underdone a number of processes to make sure we were gathering the proper information. We had a number of stakeholder comments received from our Airport Technical Advisory Committee, which is comprised of users of the airport, local government officials from surrounding entities and whatnot. We're including the FAA, surrounding cities here. Also, we had presentations to the airlines, which at Sacramento International Airport have a lot of say in exactly how and when resources can be applied and when they're going to need such resources to improve their level of service to the airport. We did, through the planning process, offer a public review and comment period. Normally, these are done in a workshop format, so you come in for the workshop for a day, you leave your comments, and we'll respond to them in the process of taking the plan itself to the Board of Supervisors. Because we were in a virtual environment, we extended a workshop, in a virtual workshop, but we went to an entire week of opportunity for people to come in and review not just the plan itself, but there was a narrated video to walk people through. So we were able to point out the significant differences, improvements, changes from the last master plan so that they would be informed right up front on exactly what they needed to be aware of. We did receive some comments, 37 comments. Most of those were regarding noise and things that had to do with the environmental review rather than the planning of the airport itself. So we'll get to that in a little bit. But that was the... of the airport itself. So, we'll get to that in a little bit. But that was the process. Now, I'd like to ask Airport Planner Cole Hartfield to walk you through a little bit of the details of the plan itself so we can move to the next step. Cole?
Thank you, Glenn. We're first going to start with the airfield. So, as you can see here, everything that's shown here on these projects are known as improvements and aircraft movement. On the bottom of the screen, which is the west side, on runway 17 right, 35 left, there are some improvements in exiting the runway to new taxiways. This is going to mirror what is already on the east side of our airport at the top of the screen. Also, atop, if you're looking at the screen, up and down, is a crossfield taxiway going east and west. This will allow aircraft to get to the terminal areas quicker to offload passengers. And then, speaking of the heat that we have right now, the hotter it is, the more length a runway is needed for aircraft. So, there is a runway extension shown off of the 17 left end to accommodate some of that. Next slide, please. Speaking of aircraft moving, we need a place to park them as well. This is to get aircraft into a gate and allow passengers to board and deplane aircraft at the same time. So, we have a number of different options. This is showing the preferred alternative. At PAL 4, so playing activity level four, we are needing 13 gates, and that's with 10.2 million passengers coming in, getting onto planes every year. Now, there are different phasing options because if we could, we would go west out of Concourse B, which is the red rectangle there. But if we can't do that because of having to shut down other gates to improve that, we could also move on to phasing option two instead. And then, on either of those, we can move to phasing option three in the future. So, we have a lot of different options available for gate improvements at the airport. One of the other things you may notice is that diagonal line in the navy blue color that is a fixed walkway between Terminal B, where you do ticketing, et cetera, to where the aircraft are, which can lead to the newer phasing option two, or the original Concourse B as another option to move between the terminals. Next slide, please. This is an overview of airport support. So, instead of looking at all of the projects and in terms of planning activity levels, now we can take a look at these in terms of use. So, we talked about the terminal areas. That's the big dark blue area in the center there, but there are others such as the lighter blue, which is cargo on the north side, and a little bit on the south. That's the bottom of the screen there. General aviation is going to be the turquoise color. We have some other options. You may see aircraft maintenance, repair, and overhaul. We have a location for that. One of the more important ones I want to point out is the brown roadway. It's going to be on the top right side of your screen. That is another alternative access to the airport, which is going to greatly increase traffic flow to the airport, and there will be some development we can increase around there. We'll talk about in a few slides. Next slide, please. So, speaking of getting your vehicle to the airport, you need a place to park it. Everything that is in the striped areas, that's existing surface lots at the airport, in the future, we are looking, well, existing, we have one structured facility, I should say. That's number seven. It's in gray on the left side. But in the future, the colored-in areas, those are going to be future surface lots, except for 18 and 19, which will be a future garage, which is going to increase the ability to park much closer to the terminal for Concourse, or sorry, Terminal B. Item number 20 is going to be a consolidated rental car facility, which I will talk about in the next slide, please. One of the things that you may not know is Sacramento International Airport, or Metropolitan, as it was used to be known, was one of the first airports to actually have a consolidated rental car facility. However, that was a while ago, and now that it is a somewhat outdated facility, we are looking at improving and building a new facility similar to what you'll see at other airports. One of the greatest benefits of this improvement will be not having to get off a plane, get your bag, take your bag to a bus, ride the bus, get off the bus, and then get a rental car. This facility will allow access from both terminals by walking to the facility, getting in the car, and leaving the airport in a timely fashion. One of the other opportunities is a ground transportation center shown by the multiple lines in between the gray buildings there. So, what this will do is it'll take our shuttle buses between parking lots. It'll take airport shuttles, transportation network companies such as Uber, Lyft, Wings, and taxis, and put them all in the same location between both terminals for easy and convenient access by our passengers. Next slide, please. And this is an overall look of our full proposed build-out of the master plan that came out of this. You can see the different colors in the legend there show the different in-plane passengers that it will take to be able to build these. So, as we're reaching 7.4 million passengers, we will need to complete the projects in blue, et cetera, on down the line. There are projects in green. These are either independent of a planning activity level, or they're going to be brought in from outside the airport. For example, eight, nine, and 10, maybe, as I alluded to earlier, an airline coming in and saying, "We have a lot of operations at this airport. We want to have a maintenance hub. Where can we build it?" And we say eight, nine, or 10. With this, in order to move beyond this, we have to do our environmental review, and I'm going to allow Julie Newton to take that from here.
All right. Thank you, Cole. Next slide, please. All right. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Julie Newton, Senior Planner with Planning and Environmental Review. I'm going to give an overview of the sequel review that's been done for the SAC International Master Plan Update. This project, we've prepared a supplemental environmental impact report to the previously adopted EIR, which was certified in 2007. As Glenn mentioned in his opening remarks, a lot of the prior master plan is still applicable. There's been, it's a continuation of those facilities, and in some cases, those facilities have moved around. So, the scope of the current EIR focuses on the changes that have been proposed from the prior master plan and the environmental impacts associated with the new facilities. The document does not reiterate analysis for facilities that were appropriately covered in the prior EIR. The SEIR was published, the draft SEIR was published on May 14th for a 45-day public review period, which ended on June 28th. At this meeting tonight, we are still accepting comments related to the analysis of the impacts on the physical environment. Next steps include preparing the final EIR and responding to comments that have been received to date, and then presenting to the Board of Supervisors. Hearing date has not been yet for those actions. Next slide, please. So, next, I'm going to step through some of the highlights of the various topical areas that were covered in the SEIR, starting with air quality. New facilities that have been proposed will result in new and additional stationary and mobile emissions of reactive organic gases or ozone precursors and particulate matter. We have recommended mitigation measures for new facilities for both construction and operation. Impacts will remain significant and unavoidable for the operation of facilities due to exceedance of our established emission standards. For climate change, similarly, the project will increase greenhouse gas emissions, primarily from mobile emissions from vehicles and fleet vehicles and building operation. Mitigation has also been recommended to reduce emissions for greenhouse gases. Emissions would remain significant and unavoidable. The master plan does demonstrate consistency with state goals and would not conflict with plans and policies adopted to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. But because the reductions associated with the proposed mitigation can't be quantified for the project at full build-out at this point, the project does exceed the local plans for greenhouse gas reductions, and impacts are significant and unavoidable. Next slide, please. With regards to biological resources, within the master plan update area, there are approximately 174 acres of wetlands. Impacts associated with the full build-out of all phases would result in a direct loss of approximately 9.34 acres of wetlands. Similarly, there are special status species that occur on the project site, which would result in loss of foraging habitat for special status birds, potential impacts to giant garter snake, western pond turtle, and the potential for tree removal. Mitigation has been proposed to reduce impacts to less than significant level for these special status species as well as tree removal. With regard to consistency with the Natomas Basin HCP, the county is not a party to the Natomas Basin or Metro Airport HCPs. None of the county airport land has been identified as conservation land for these HCPs and would not impair the conservancy's ability to obtain conservation land. Therefore, there's no conflict with the adopted HCPs. Next slide, please. For cultural resources, pedestrian surveys were conducted for areas that were not covered by the prior EIR. No new significant resources were identified during those surveys. Mitigation has been included to address inadvertent discoveries of cultural resources in the event that a resource is uncovered during construction. For tribal cultural resources, per cent to AB52, the county notified tribes that have formally requested notification, resource, sorry, responses were received from the United Auburn Indian Community and Wilton Rancheria. Tribes indicated that there may be resources located near the boundary of the project, but at this point, it's unclear if the project would impact those resources. That being said, mitigation has been included to afford UAIC and Wilton Rancheria the opportunity to have monitors on-site to observe ground disturbance. All right. Next slide, please. For hydrology, the project will increase impervious surfaces and runoff associated with the project. Overall drainage patterns are not proposed to be significantly altered, and the existing drainage system would be modified to accommodate additional runoff. The project is required to comply with all adopted stormwater quality and waste discharge requirements. Project is located within two urban level of protection areas, meaning areas that are required to have 200-year level of flood protection. Development proposed within, is proposed within the levy protected area in 2007 Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency, or SAFCA, commenced with a Natomas levy improvement program, which was completed in 2016. There are also several other levy improvement projects that are underway and expected completion in 2025. Next slide, please. For land use, the project would result in the conversion of 135 acres of farmland for the full development of the Phase 3 projects. Mitigation has been included to set aside an equal amount of land under permanent easement. Despite mitigation, however, impacts for farmland conversion are considered significant and unavoidable. The project is consistent with the County General Plan and zoning code. New development within and adjacent to the airport are subject to the policies of the ALUCP for noise, safety, and airspace protection. For noise, the noise contours that have been adopted with the master plan do remain adequate for the current proposal. We would see permanent increases, oh, sorry, increases in ambient noise associated with construction and operation of new facilities. The nearest sensitive receptors are half a mile to the west and south along Garden Highway, and two miles to the southeast in the Natomas community. The project would not increase ambient noise levels at these locations. Next slide, please. Public services and utilities, implementation of master plan projects will result in the need for additional energy, water, and sewer facilities. Existing systems are designed to accommodate these expanded uses. For transportation, impacts related to vehicle miles traveled, or VMT, were calculated for trips associated with employees and passengers. Passenger VMT would increase slightly. However, over the full build-out of the master plan, it's expected that increased passengers would be due to a recapture of passengers that are currently traveling to the Bay Area and other airports. Through this recapture of passengers, although we would see a slight increase in local VMT, overall, the regional VMT would decrease by keeping those passengers closer to the Sacramento Center. Changes in employee VMT were primarily associated with increased VMT in the short term through operation of a proposed cargo facility and other new uses on the airport. Mitigation has been included to implement strategies to reduce VMT, but this is one area where impacts would remain significant and unavoidable. The traffic study also identified several roadways that could experience safety hazards. These include Alberta Road from Earhart Road to State Route 99. Mitigation has been included to widen this roadway to alleviate that concern. Additionally, southbound I-5 at the Airport Boulevard off-ramp, mitigation has been included for a signalized intersection or roundabout to prevent queuing from backing up onto I-5. Next slide, please. At this point, comments received to date have been transmitted as part of the hearing package to the commission. The letters we've received so far have included comments that are related to air quality, noise, sewer service, and transportation. As I have mentioned previously, we are accepting verbal comments at this meeting tonight, which will be incorporated into the final supplemental EIR that will ultimately be presented at the Board of Supervisors. As Glenn mentioned earlier, at tonight's meeting, we are requesting that the commission recognize the end of the public review period and direct staff to prepare the final supplemental environmental impact report. Next slide, please. And with that, that concludes our presentation, and we have the team on hand for any questions.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Yeah, this is Justin. If I could understand a little bit more about, I understand that the noise impacts are not projected to really change to the southeast with those sensitive receptors. But can you talk if the kind of current assumptions were, you know, were verified? Because it seems like most of the letters don't think the, or the comments don't really believe the current assumptions are correct.
This is Glenn Rickleton with the County Department of Airports. Many of those comments regarding the southeast turn had to do with procedures that were implemented by the FAA. Again, that is beyond the authority of the county to either modify or change or implement. The plan itself does not recommend any sort of pathway or anything like that. So, the FAA actually did, under the NEPA, National Environmental Policy Act requirements, did environmental clearance before they implemented those procedures and ultimately determined the impacts were less insignificant going forward, and implemented those procedures in January of 2015. So, regarding the master plan, since it's not, we did not implement those procedures, the activity levels associated with the current and future use of the airport have been evaluated, and the determination is that those noise impacts are still less than significant under both the state and federal standard.
So, I appreciate that answer, and I understand that answer. But are you telling me that if I go out to one of those houses that are southeast, I'm going to find the noise levels to be less than 65 decibels?
No.
With the current flight plans?
No. And they never have been less than 65 decibels as long as those houses have been there. We're getting into a discussion of exactly how the metric of noise is measured, and I'm not sure if we want to go into that, but I can. The noise contour is a 65 contour, and actually, we use the 60 contour in the county. The majority of, there are no incompatible land uses, i.e., from the county standpoint, residential land uses inside that 60 that, some of them were built after the contour was established. However, the contour itself is based on an average annual day based on a year of data put into an FAA-required model to generate the contour. It is not a equivalent to going out with a noise meter and monitoring 65 decibel. It is not the same thing. It is not required under the environmental regulations to equate to that.
Got it. I appreciate that explanation. That makes more sense.
Any other questions for staff? Can you just explain to me, I'm sorry, one more time, that tonight, we're acknowledging the comment period, but what are the further sort of steps in the full master plan?
Yeah, beyond tonight, once the Planning and Environmental Review will prepare the final EIR in response to comments therein, and then, once that's complete, the next action is for the Department of Airports to bring the master plan to the Board of Supervisors for final approval through certification of the final EIR.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Entertain discussion or emotion? I'm happy to move.
Need to open it up for further public comment?
Oh, I apologize. Do we have any public comment?
No, we do not have any public comments.
Okay, great. Any comments by the commissioners? Okay, I'm happy to make the motion that we are acknowledging that end of the public comment period.
I'll second that, this is Commissioner Tatiishi.
Thank you, and for the vote, Commissioners Raythel?
Yes.
Tatiishi?
Yes.
And Commissioner Martinson?
Yes.
And the motion passes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Do we have a planning director's report tonight?
Yes, Commissioner Chris Bohulie, once again, a couple of items to update the group on. We do have a hearing coming up on eight twenty-three, so there will be a meeting coming up in a couple of weeks. We do have one item for that, for that hearing. I also wanted to mention that we do have that South Sacramento CPAC appeal of that boat and RV storage project coming up the day after that hearing on eight twenty-four at the Board of Supervisors. So I will keep you updated on that one. Again, that's where the D-PAC has appealed the decision of the Planning Commission to approve that boat and RV storage use permit. And then, the only other thing that I'll mention is that we do have a number of items that are queuing up for September hearing dates. And then, I know the group is aware that we are currently in the process, or the clerk of the board is working with the district offices to fill the two vacancies on the mission. But we do have a number of items that are teeing up, and we're trying to figure out exactly how to, I guess, organize these next agendas so that we can keep projects moving forward through the hearings. So just wanted to mention those couple of items to the group.
So this is Commissioner, just to be clear, there is no planning commission then between now and then potentially the twenty-third of August?
That's correct.
Are we looking at, in theory, a normal schedule for September, the second and fourth Mondays? Or are we looking at different days?
We are looking at the second and fourth, the thirteenth and the twenty-seventh.
I can't hear him.
Can you hear us?
What I just said?
I apologize, Chris, your volume is extremely low, so we've got you, I've got you on full blast now so that I can hear you.
Oh, didn't realize. So we are looking at a September thirteenth and the September twenty-seventh dates, the regularly scheduled second and fourth Mondays of the month.
And we're still anticipating being on blue jeans for September?
I'll leave that to the clerk of the board's office to indicate game plan on that.
I'm sorry, what was your question?
Are we still intending to be on blue jeans or virtual events through September? Or do we have a timeline on when we may be returning back to chambers?
Hi, this is Flo with the clerk's office. Yes, if we can work with you, if you guys want to do a hybrid format, which is what the Board of Supervisors are doing right now, where you could come into the chambers, we would still offer the virtual aspect, which is something that will be consistent throughout. So the only thing that I do caution is that we are requiring everyone to wear a mask.
And is that, is that up to us as a body to decide? Or does it have to be approved by the board, or how does that process work?
Yeah, you could decide as a body, you know, if you guys want to do that, and you could work with Lydia on that and Alma in terms of getting that coordinated. It takes a little bit of extra coordination on our end just to ensure that we have staffing available to do that. Because we're, sometimes in the evenings, we have two different meetings running at the same time, and so our staff is kind of split, trying to manage other hearing bodies at the same time.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if it's worthy of a conversation, I'm comfortable keeping us virtual until we get a full commission again, and then know, you know, the comfort level of those two commissioners. I mean, right now, since we're down to three, and I think we have to all be present to make a meeting occur, I think there's more flexibility with having a virtual dynamic until we have the additional commissioners seated.
Yeah, I would agree with you, and I just note that for the meetings in September, I will most likely be only able to join virtually, as I won't be in Sacramento. So it does add that additional layer of flexibility for us.
Yeah, I'm with you for the thirteenth, I will be in Southern California on that date.
Okay.
Well, we're happy to work with you in terms of when you're ready to start discussing the coordination of that, and I'll make sure to let Alma know she's on vacation today, and so I'll be sure to let her know to be aware of that. And maybe she'll reach out just to kind of brainstorm, because the earlier we can plan for that, the better it will run, and then we can also make sure that we have adequate staffing. So I do encourage the virtual meetings at this point, just for the simple fact that we don't know when the public health officer is going to lift the mask order. I don't think that she anticipates lifting that anytime soon and the effort of just trying to get the virus contained. So I do encourage that, and it's a lot easier for us to do the virtual meetings as well.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other scheduling items?
I don't have anything on my end.
Okay, any public comment?
No, there are no additional public comments.
Great, then call this meeting adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you, have a great night.